Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this 12th day of February 2024. I'd like to welcome our guests this evening and move right into tonight's agenda. The first item being the consideration of the council minutes of the meeting that was held on January 22nd of 2024.
If you'll put it in way of reading.
Okay, council, we have a motion on the floor. The motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments in those minutes as they appeared in your packet? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment.
Yes, sir.
No public comment. Good deal. Okay, moving right along. The next item would be the vaping organs presentation discussion. And we have with us tonight Dr. Anita Stewart and Erin Evans. Just to set the stage for them a little bit, this council, I know you might have been a little shocked to see that I brought to you an ordinance before it's been kicked to planning and zoning. We're not gonna not kick it to planning and zoning, but I thought we would get it here and set the stage to send it to planning and zoning. Quite frankly, being a member, of course, I don't actually sit on the executive board anymore. I have signed my seat to Amy Cook, but I'm very active with the coalition and have been for many, many years. And I actually serve on the prevention committee. But tonight, what we have is a component of the coalition coming to us, and it's the chair of the intervention committee and of course, a committee member. Lot of moving pieces there, but a lot of good work being done by the Nicholas Intervention Coalition in our community. So at this time, what I'd like to do is turn the floor over to you all. Dr. Stewart, if you want to...
Can you stand or...
Yeah, if you could please, yeah, if you could. And then if you just want to set the stage, maybe a little who you are, where you come from, and...
Sure.
Yeah.
So thank you guys for having me this evening. I appreciate the time to speak to you. So I am a representative of the Nicholas Intervention Coalition. I'm the intervention subcommittee chair, and I'm also the health officer at the Nicholas County Health Department. And I have Erin Evans with me here with teen court. And what we have found is that we're seeing increased activity related to vaping and vape use in our schools. We're getting, Erin's getting lots of referrals through teen court because of this. Certainly more last year. There were 40 cases last year with some suspensions related to that. And then we're seeing less this year, but we don't feel that it's not happening. We just think that kids are getting better at hiding that. We know from data that 14% of kids have used vape-related products, and we're seeing not just nicotine in those vape products. When they're being tested, there's other like Delta A, kratom, other things, some THC products in those vape pens as well. So it's not just nicotine in those pens. What we have seen from a public health lens and from a prevention lens is that if we can make it harder for kids to acquire those substances, just like we did with tobacco, that it can deter some of that activity. So recommendations are to create a distance requirement with this vape ordinance. This would not just be strictly for vape shops. It would be for any retailer that sells vape products. So we know that 80% of our sales are at retail stores. So like your gas stations, convenience stores, and it's not just at the vape shops. As I was offline speaking to a few of you and the mayor, we know that there are a few bills currently in the legislative session right now that could affect this, that we might have to tweak this a little bit, that we'd just like to kind of keep this moving forward. We know that, like I said, that this is becoming a nuisance and certainly a health risk. We're seeing kids be hospitalized related to poisonings related to vapes. We're seeing kids needing rescue medications, getting sent to the emergency department, more policy of poison control related to these issues. We're also seeing the, it's called a valley, which is related to any type of e-cigarette or electronic means of the vapor products causing acute lung injury. So popcorn lung is just the term that a lot of people recognize with that. And we're seeing that with not only nicotine-related vape products, but also the THC-related vape products. So I'm asking you to consider this ordinance. I encourage you to take a look at it. It includes, like I said, that all of the retailers, there is kind of the grandfather clause. It would create a need for a, like a certificate, like when they get a business license, which they have to do here, related to that product, the use of that product. And then, and then looking at, like I said, not only the vapor-related products, but also the other THC-related products too. And those are all listed out in that ordinance. Any questions for me on that or clarifications? And I know, like I said, I just, I can also, I'm gonna be sending Amy the electronic copy of this for editing. I presented, just for transparency, I presented this to the county commission. They currently do not have zoning in the county, so we can't impose a distance requirement. So one of the suggestions was to bring that to the city councils. I've reached out to you as well as to Richwood to try to put that into effect and also working with the county to come up with some other creative ways to make, to make this a little bit harder to acquire the products for our youth and just to create, make the culture of health more of the easier route versus the harder route.
Yeah. So Dr. Stewart, if you could please, as I told you before the meeting, I wanted to take a comprehensive deep dive into this, and I did not get that done. So particularly, I did read through the ordinance. Can you, can you help us a little bit on what this does that we don't have in law right now?
Yeah, so right now in law, there are no distance requirements. So the biggest thing is that any place that serves children, so your churches, your youth activity centers, schools, daycares, it would put a mile or 5,280 feet requirement to where you couldn't sell those products from new establishment within that mileage of those child-serving centers. Again, that makes it harder for kids to acquire those. The other thing that I think this does guys is I think that it shows that this is an important topic that we're talking about as a community. I think that there's a lot of misinformation and disinformation related to the safety and efficacy of vaping. And, and I think that there's a lot of parents that don't really understand that this is harmful. We see parents buying these products for their kids. We're working on those things. What we know is that, you know, with education, you can do so much, but when we can get some policies in place to kind of help put that safety net in place, that's where we can see bigger changes and figure those things out together.
Yeah. The other thing you mentioned that I thought was interesting too, you told me that this, this requires the ID, where right now they can't sell to a minor, but it doesn't require an ID. That seems crazy.
Yeah, it just, yeah, there's, it says on the door, they have to be 18 to enter. They don't show proof of ID when they purchase and...
That's because the law says it doesn't require an ID.
It's not in the law. Right. And so there is, like, like I said, there is a House bill, I apologize, I don't have the reference number to that, but Elliot Tully has introduced a House bill after our discussions that would require an ID. And it also steepens the fines. So you'll note in that ordinance that those fines are higher than, or what in the state, or in the state code right now, and it has the language of requiring the ID. So it would mimic what's in the state code. The tricky thing is, and this is where kind of the rubber meets the road here, is enforcement. And who's responsible for enforcement? So the other thing that it would do for having this in a city and a county level, it would help to provide some enforcement support at a local level. We hear all the time from parents like, "I didn't buy this to my kid. They've gone and they bought it," you know, "and there's no consequences to that." So this would also create some safety net for enforcement.
You know, I've had a lot of thought about that because a lot of the alcohol sting is done by the state police because the enforcement with that comes from alcohol or the alcohol ABC. And so the other thing that I think maybe we could do that would be a neat partnership relationship with the coalition and the city is let's do some sting with the coalition.
Yeah.
Let's partner with you and actually do some sting with our law enforcement. And, you know, let's, let's, let's get it set up to where we can go out and, and, you know, see if these businesses are selling to minors, because it is a problem. As a matter of fact, Erin, you could probably verify this. I was recently in a, in a meeting with the Board of Education, and they told me they had just a couple, recently a couple of expulsions with vaping, and of course, it was THC. So, I mean, it's a problem. And then they also said what you said, that they don't think it's any better. It's just the kids have gotten better and the devices have gotten better. I mean, they were telling me stuff that, I mean, they could probably do it in front of me and I wouldn't know what they were doing.
Last year in teen court, I received over 40 different referrals from the four secondary schools in Nicholas County. And those referrals to teen court were tobacco, also, or were nicotine, but also THC. Throughout, last year, we had incidents where juveniles were using the THC, the dab pens, what they're called, and they were having overdose symptoms. They were passing out. They were in a, that happened at the county fair, where a juvenile was Narcan, was given a Narcan because they thought that she was overdosing. And I believe it was two other juveniles who had to go to the hospital for the exact same adverse reactions to the THC. This is not just, this is not just smoking weed the way they used to. This is a lot more serious. Not only that, but these kids are able to, which I have witnessed this, and I have tried to take, tried to work with this, but I've witnessed teenagers who have walked into certain vape shops, and then they walk out with several bags worth of products. The fines are not strong enough for these, for these shops. They can make up, they can make up the money from the fines on the, on what they sell. So this is becoming a really serious situation. These, I'm not sure how many years, how many this year have been expelled, a face expulsion because they're using THC inside the schools. But last year, there was so many kids, the alternative school was full of kids for using THC at school. This is a very serious situation, and there needs to be a lot more recognition brought to it.
Yeah. And then the other thing I wanted to highlight too, I know there was a big, I think even the city, if I remember right, we participated in helping trying to get vape detectors in the, in the bathrooms. I guess the technology now of this vape stuff, the detectors don't even work. They don't set them off.
Yeah, it affects the technology.
They, they work some, you know, and, but then of course, they have to, the kids realize that the vape detectors which are installed in the bathrooms, they know, okay, maybe I can't vape in the bathroom. Same time, they're so easy, you can wear a hooded sweatshirt and you can vape, you know, blow the vape product into your sleeve. These kids are not stupid. Now, we know that, every one of us here at some point in time, trying to get away with dumb stuff. There's, you know how to get away with stuff. Well, let's not make it easy for them.
Yeah.
This is a serious...
Okay, council, questions?
So Erin, I, I, you know, I want to say I, I totally support this, and I think it's wonderful. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I'm a little bit concerned too with not only that, I venture to guess it's even more of a problem for people buying it for the kids.
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, are, how are we addressing that? And is that being addressed at the state level? Are there penalties for that? I mean, I guess if I, if I bought alcohol for kids, I'd be in trouble. Is it the same kind of situation?
Right now, it is legal for parents to buy vape products and alcohol for their kids using inside their own home. That is, that is, that's legal. I think a lot of the problem for personal households is the lack of knowledge.
Yeah.
There's a lot of parents who feel they're buying their kids the vapes to help with their anxiety, not knowing that is actually increasing their kids' anxiety.
I do. I agree.
I, I know that whenever you charge it alcohol for a minor, there is certain legislation that covers that, contributing to the latency of a minor charged like that. There's not, to my knowledge, any real, any legislation for buying a vape for a kid.
Is vaping and cigarettes the same? I mean, no.
As far as the dangers related to that?
Well, no, you go ahead and, you're not allowed to smoke in this building, are you?
Yes. So according to the Clean Indoor Air Act from, provided by the Nicholas County Health Department, electronic cigarettes and vaping follows the same code as tobacco smoke. So anywhere that you can't smoke cigarettes, you cannot vape. And we in this county have a very strong clean indoor air policy. So thank you for helping support that.
Is it reasonable for us at city council to wait on the state, this session and see what happens before we craft something or what?
I think that certainly would be reasonable. Again, I think that the more we're discussing this and the more that this is televised and that it's, it's a topic of conversation, the more education we'll have about this, I'm really hopeful that these House bills get passed. So far, we've not passed a lot of bills out of the House or Senate yet. So I'm hopeful that this one will be one that, that makes it and that, it's House Bill 5394 is one of them. There's two. And I can email you those, the reference numbers for those.
What is the session over? I can't remember. My, Erin, I just came back from there today.
I think the 19th is halfway point. And so they have to have things introduced.
There's a drop dead date on bills for passing, or no, for introduction, not passing. So passing is after the last day.
I think it's the night, the night of this stuff.
Absent anything done at the state level, is there anything that keeps us from passing an ordinance now, far as you know?
No, I think what you're saying, I think makes sense that there's some bills that are, you know, that could potentially pass this session. You know, what, what, what we have to do is we have to start making a difference in this whole effort. And, and with the monies and the coalition, I'm so proud of a lot of the things that they're doing to expedite identifying the true needs and the organization and all that's being done. I think, I think your point's well taken, Jim, that if, we don't want to write an ordinance that's going to change in a month because the state passes something. So I think we can, you know, we can, you know, in a, in a parallel pattern, go ahead and start what we're doing, but not pass it until we see what the session closes out. And hopefully they put some teeth in and maybe even some teeth that'll better help our ordinance.
I, I do not anticipate a distance ordinance coming from, or like legislation from a legislative standpoint. So I think that if anything, really considering that and how that might look here is really, it's probably the most important piece of this ordinance. And it's something that would be unique to our municipalities here in Nicholas County.
So regardless of what the state does, we probably want to add the distance requirement?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah. I have a question, but having two middle aged, or middle school age kids and one that just got out of high school, this is a real deal. Obviously, the schools only guess, can only go so far with what they can and can't do. The problems, a lot of problems start at home. A lot of problems can't be fixed at home. But what I do know about what's going on in the schools hearing from my kids is, to the kids' joke, there's no serious ramifications from any of it. So I think anything we can do to help, like I said, to, to slow down the start of it. And like I said, I've got a 12-year-old, a 14-year-old, not here, you know, they tell us, they tell us.
The other, the other thing I find interesting, I think it's the education piece because it's weird when they start showing me the way some of these kids are vaping. I, I would have had no idea. A kid takes some, I would have not known that they were vaping.
When you have a device that looks like a thumb drive, it could be as small as a thumb drive or something similar like that, and you can palm it in your hand, or a pen, you can palm it in your hand in the middle of class, and you can hit the vape, and you can blow it out into the sleeve of your hooded sweatshirt, which has happened every day. And the only hint that something is going on might be that it now smells like watermelon in the room, or, or it might smell like cotton candy or something. That the only indicator that somebody may be vaping. And then from, from law enforcement standpoint, it's difficult to try to find a small little device. And me and Dr. Stewart have talked several times and some of the ER docs and the pediatricians, you can absolutely tell the difference between a childhood's vaping and a childhood's not simply by listening to the lungs. And whenever you have, and I heard, I heard a doctor make this comment, said this 15-year-old juvenile sounded like a 70-year-old person who'd been smoking for 50 years.
Wow.
And to me, that puts a jeopardy in the future of what we have, and it bothers me.
In other words, it's worse than cigarettes.
Absolutely, of course, cigarettes. Yes. But I mean, I think that this is all marketing. I mean, you guys know this. It's all marketing. These are all, they were bought and purchased by all of the cigarette companies. It's the same, and they're genius. They do all of our, our marketing. They do all of our, our marketing now. And, and I think it was intended to be, you know, a harm reduction strategy for tobacco use in adults, and now it's been marketed for youth and...
Now, is the concern, the cigarette or the other harmful stuff that met, I guess may or may not be in there?
I think it's both. I think that it's certainly, we know that they can get lung damage from just the nicotine part in the vape, but we also know that they're putting multiple different substances.
Yes.
I came from Fayette County, and we have children that overdosed that had fentanyl products in their dab pens. So we're typically in this, in Nicholas County, because I've been the health officer at both places, we're three to five years behind that. It's coming here, guys. So I think we can...
That is already here. We've had different, a different law enforcement who has found and tested and found fentanyl, or opioids inside of some of the vapes. So, and I know that whenever I was a deputy, we found, you know, we've taken vapes off of people we've stopped, you know, adults that actually had the methamphetamine, you know, and heroin inside the vape where they boiled it down and they were able to smoke out of it. So I, I just, I don't know, I don't want to see what's coming. And we don't get a stop one now, it's gonna be really bad.
Kind of touching on what Jim said to me about, and my wife is a teacher as well in Fayette County. So it is a problem, and I support this concern. I kind of agree. I don't know, I don't want to say I'm agreeing or disagreeing, but my concern is legislation on a, maybe a state or even federal level at that point. And us enforcing the 18-year-old, I guess, purchasing at point two, what, how, my concern comes back to how do we enforce it? What are the penalties? And I, and I've been reading in here, you know, nothing below, you know, misdemeanor and nothing below a $500 fine. Okay, yeah, great. As far as enforcing that and any other legislation that the state passes, or maybe federal passes, I know there are certain things that we can do on a local level, but that is a concern. And I also saw, because the one that was emailed to us in our packet, and it was more towards the county commission than it was maybe to some, but I know the one we received here is with the city. So I guess those are some concerns that just pop out immediately. Again, I support this. It is an issue. It's a problem. I mean, I heard a problem about today and...
So, yeah, the thing I would say about, that's what's unique about what we are, we're a home rule city.
Yeah.
So we can't go below state law, but we can go above state law. And so, you know, the thing that I don't understand is, is why don't we make this like it is for alcohol? You find, you find the individual that sold it and you find the business owner? Why don't we have a double fine? They do when they get alcohol.
So in this new ordinance, it will have a fine, it, it doesn't like have a fine for the parent, but certainly if someone, like whoever was working at the store.
Sold it.
There is a fine for that.
I grabbed that too, but I wanted to make sure that...
And please, like, if you guys want to put more teeth in this, I'm happy to put more teeth in, because it is sort of watered down.
I'm more of a hothead, so when we were discussing this, I wanted, I wanted more, you know, and she's...
The biggest part's gonna be the enforcement. We can put anything we want in black and white, but if we don't figure out the enforcement part, it's, you know, it's a drill for nothing.
Right.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like to me, of course, I'm, I'm really stupid about this, and I admit that, but if there's THC in some of this stuff, and even if adults were buying it, that's not legal either, is it?
Yes, it is.
It is.
There is, Delta 8 is a lea, I'll put in plain terms. Delta 8 is legal marijuana. It's legal THC. It doesn't have the same THC level.
Isn't it like manufactured marijuana?
It's like a percentage thing.
Synthetic.
It's kind of like the difference between a beer and liquor.
Yeah.
Okay. There's, there's a little bit of a difference in the alcohol content of those. The same is the truth with THC.
It's a percentage thing.
It's under .3 would be considered legal currently to sell.
But THC is not made out of marijuana, right? Isn't it?
So it's a product of cannabis. It's very technical.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay, all right. Well, see, they say, you know, isn't those conversations Delta this and Delta that? I mean...
So we consider those all synthetic cannabinoids.
Okay. Okay, well, let's do something to make a difference. So let me tell you, anybody else have any other questions or comments? So we want to make a difference. You know, let's, let's, let's make something happen in the city of Somersville. I think as you can tell by this council, this mayor, you know, we want to make a difference, especially in the youth. So what I would like to do is kick this to the planning and zoning, and then, and then just straight up, I'll let them figure that piece out. They may ask that you all come before them to help them. But what I am going to beg to do is that we're not talking about this six months down the road. I want an ordinance in a reasonable amount of time because this is something that somehow we got to figure out to make a difference tomorrow.
Yeah. And what I can do also is keep everyone abreast of what's happening at the legislature regarding some of this, how this might affect the ordinance and the code. And, because that certainly will affect this ordinance.
Okay. If you can get Amy that, any of that information, she can forward it to us all. So thanks.
Okay. Hey, thank you. Thank you all much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Appreciate it.
Thanks for everything you do. Appreciate both of you. Okay, council, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is approval of funding for roof for the Somersville Public Library. Our public library is in quite the quagmire. Of course, you know, the biggest piece is funding, and of course, the lion's share of the library's funding comes from our annual general fund budget. And of course, as things have changed over time and the way the college used to participate with the library, and they don't anymore, the funding stream and, and maintenance of property and assets have been, has become quite the challenge for the library. They have a little money in reserve, and I've reviewed it with them. I'll tell you where we're at right now. What I told Marla Hornsby, who is the president of the library board, I don't know if they call it chairperson or president, but she's over the library board, I told her that I would bring it before the city council in hopes that we would approve 50% of, of the invoice of, actually, what I want to do is, what I want to do is I want to approve 50%. So the bill right now is $34,384 to redo the entire roof. And I got to tell you, if you go up to the library right now and get in there, you'll see it's leaking. There's places where it's just, it's unfortunate. So this is something that needs to be done as soon as it can be done, whether permitting and funding approved. So in discussing with them, they do have a small reserve. If, if, if the library paid for this entire roof, it would pretty much all but deplete their reserve funds. And I still think that they need funds to have on reserve in case something come up that they can't wait to go find funding for. So what I'm asking council you to do is out of contingency, approve 50% of the roof replacement. The reason I'm saying 50% is I believe that there has been, I know James reached out to Jeremy Collins, the owner of Alpha, and, and I believe that the cost may be a tad smaller than what we're, what's, what's being represented here. So what I'm asking us to do at the end is pay for 50% of the library roof, which is a must. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion?
Let's approve.
We got a first and a second. Okay, further discussion or questions? And we're gonna pull this out of contingency.
Mayor, my only question, it has two bins on here. One's for a shingle roof and one's for a metal roof.
Yeah, good. Yes, it's, it's gonna be the shingle roof. And the reason that, the reason that, the reason that the shingle roof is the price it is, and the roof, the, even the, the metal roof is the price it is, is because Jeremy has quite the inventory. So we're actually not even paying what the market price would be for these products because of the inventory that he has installed that he would use on this, on this job, which is, to me, another good thing with this quote is because, you know, they did go out and get other quotes that were, that were considerably higher than this quote. Okay, so it is the shingle roof. Good, good catch there, Brandon. Okay, any other questions? All those in favor signify... All those in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries.
How much will that be?
So it's $34,000 right now, but it's been brought to my attention that it's going to be a tad cheaper, and so that's, so we'll just pay 50% of whatever the price is going to be.
Seven twenty-two.
Okay, the next item on the agenda would be approval of Sean Singer to the Brown Oaks Board of Directors to fill an unexpired term of Meg Ashby, and of course, she would pick up a term that would carry her till June 30th of 2025. Second, we have a first and a second. Thing I would like to do at this time is I would like to thank Meg for her many years of service, um, especially last year was an incredible dedicated year for board members at Brown Oaks. So, um, we want to thank Meg for her many years of service, and, uh, we look forward to the appointment and work of Sean Singer supporting Brown Oaks. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Tammy Gregory to the Brown Oaks Board of Directors to fill the unexpired term of Angie Walkup, and of course, her term expires June 30th of 2026. We have a first and a second, um, any discussion? I also would like to highlight and thank Angie, um, for her many years of service on the Brown Oaks Board of Directors, again, highlighting all the work they did last year in the 100 Year Celebration, um, so we thank Angie for her dedication to our community and work that she did through Brown Oaks, and also welcome, uh, Tammy Gregory. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. The quarters report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, got some information here, I was going to pass this along to you. Okay, I just want to begin by, uh, just letting the council know, uh, January was a bit slow with the business licenses, we, we did have three, uh, as noted there, those three, uh, there are the new businesses in January. Also, the weekend has been real busy for the mayor and I, been down in Charleston at the municipal league, uh, meetings, and I have to say, they were, they were terrific again, brought back a lot of good information, uh, spent the day over at, uh, the Capitol doing some lobbying, talking to some people, senators and, uh, House of Delegates, and, you know, I just can't stress this enough, um, I know the municipality league said today, you know, we have, we can have such an impact by coming back to the cities and discussing this and making sure that information gets out to the delegates. So anytime you have a, a chance, and there's especially something on the docket that, that you need to tell your delegate, it's important to make sure, that's, that's our line to Charleston, and, um, like the doctor was saying here, there's some things down there right now, you know, if we had a little bit more information on that, we certainly would want to get hold of our delegates and talk to them. Um, I'm not going to go through everything, but I did want to highlight a few that I felt very interesting today when I was down in Charleston. Some of the league priorities today was, uh, Bill 265, uh, raising the threshold at which auction is required for real and personal properties, um, you know, these are all real important here that I'm talking about, these are things that definitely affect us, and has an impact on it. This bill here, what it does is it raises the auction limit from 1,000 to 10,000, and to allow the, for the sale of real property to adjacent property owners. Uh, the reason they like it, it relieves financial burden of holding auction for small amounts, it allows sales of rehab properties. So, that was pretty interesting, I thought Bill 554, uh, and HB, or Bill 5420 was important, raising the threshold, threshold for bids for public projects, you know, over the years, especially since COVID, uh, we've all seen the escalation of, um, what things are costing, and, uh, the cost of these things, uh, they're trying to get this raised from 25,000 to $50,000. Uh, why they like it, it just allows smaller projects to proceed without bids, it shortens the time for small, for small projects to be completed, and they're seeing all across the state, small projects getting held up just because of the bidding process, so they're, they're looking at that. Uh, Bill 217, the league is also supporting, it's authorizing, uh, negotiation when all bids exceed maximum budgets, this is kind of interesting here, what it does is it allows municipalities to, to negotiate with the lowest bidder if all bids exceed the maximum budget. So if it's going over the budget, this for the first time will give you the opportunity to get in and negotiate, which is something that's not normally done, you know, in this bidding, in this bidding process. Uh, Bill 4507 is a tax credit, uh, for facade improvements, um, right now, you see tax credits, um, for historic buildings and things of that nature, they're wanting this in there, and I'll tell you why, it provides incentives to improve nonhistoric properties, uh, in historic districts, so it allows you to possibly get some, some additional funding for other buildings. On the other side, uh, Bill 4602, to repeal municipal license and tax when state licenses are required, uh, this is really, uh, difficult for the cities, but what it does, eliminates municipal business license and tax, okay? So certainly, they're down there fighting on that, on our behalf of that. Uh, Bill 4249, to clarify that municipal BNO taxes shall not apply to the owner of a contract, and not to subcontractors on a project. So what it does is prohibit cities from collecting BNO on subcontractors, obviously, while we oppose it, uh, is, the wording is very vague and confusing, it is, I, I looked at it today, it's very confusing, but, uh, you know, some of the big projects that you see, you know, we certainly, uh, need to be collected from some of the subcontractors. With the most recent building that was built, um, here in, in, in our town, um, you know, it was pretty large, and it had a, a bunch of subcontractors, so, you know, this was very important to us. Um, last but not least, that I think was important, uh, to facilitate the creation of home-based businesses, uh, this is very interesting, Jim, I've thought of you a lot, because we've had so much conversations about things of this nature, but what it does, it limits zoning regulations for home-based businesses. Uh, this is very difficult, would be really tough on us, uh, the reason, uh, they're opposing it is it sponsors, it's really sponsored by out-of-state interest, very broad restrictions on how zoning applies to home-based businesses, and basically what it is, is folks from outside the state oftentimes are buying properties up and doing home-based businesses, um, these can be difficult to monitor and difficult to, you know, just, uh, just to handle, basically, I mean, they're going to be in our neighborhoods, you would think they wouldn't be bad, but, you know, it could create some traffic as things happen, so that's just some of the information, a real small piece of things that I followed today when I went over to the Capitol, it was a great day, and, and I certainly enjoyed it, learned a lot, and, uh, we're very fortunate to have a mayor that is, is truly locked in, um, he is, he's locked in on that, he sits on that, on that municipal board, uh, municipal league board, had a two-hour meeting, I think, yesterday, it is, it is yesterday, yesterday, so, uh, I appreciate all that he does on that, and that's...
Here's, here's the $5 I told you.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Yeah, okay.
$5, what you got there?
But, 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 he didn't say, he didn't say, he didn't say everything I told you. But, but, but it is big, I mean, it really is, and, and, and it's, we, we need to stay locked in, I, I've learned a lot, and it's, it's interesting, but, you know, we do have a say, and, uh, you know, we elect those officials to listen to us, so, uh, make sure that we're getting them the information. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. No, uh, you know, just a, just a few words too, um, you know, Somersville is really poised, we, we, we put ourselves in a good position, we have, and I tell people that all the time, it's not me, it's us, it's the employees, it's the citizens, and, you know, just like today, they selected, they had Mayor's Day on statewide radio today, and, and of course, they picked mayors from all over the state, and, you know, I sat next to Mayor Noel, the Martinsburg mayor, on the radio today, talking about, you know, answering the same questions he did, you know, what's good about Somersville, what's, you know, and when you look at the dynamics, and just the whole thing, I mean, you know, um, we are a small city that people pay attention to and ask a lot of questions about, um, you know, um, the Charleston mayor and I have a great relationship, um, you know, just, you know, it's all about networking and partnering, and, you know, one of the things that I discovered many years ago is, you know, unless we connect with the people that are doing it, we're never going to be able to do it, because we don't have the resources that they do in the big cities, and, and so then you adjust, adapt, and overcome, and you figure out, how can we do it? And there's a lot of good things going on here, I mean, you know, there's just a lot of things that are on the uptake, so let me address one of those things in my mayor's report. Um, you know, I got a little bit concerned after we received the first quarter of our state tax, um, sales tax, uh, because I'm like, ew, we might have even over budgeted. Well, we were notified last week, towards the end of the week, by the state tax department, oh, guess what? There's been, there's been a error in the tax you received, and we're sending you in that first quarter an additional $176,142.
That's a big, that's a big number.
So, and by the way, they told us we'd have, so not only that, we got our second quarter of that sales tax, and our second quarter came in at $540,898.84. Putting the two together, right now, for the first two quarters, we've received $899,726.90. So if you go to the budget, of which you all got an update of not only the expenditures, the checks that have been written, if you go to the budget to the revenue portion, you'll see that we budgeted for sales tax, um, 1,675,000 was our estimate, okay? Now, interesting enough, when I sat in the meeting with mayors, they're like, trust me, you, you've been too conservative, that's what they told me. As a matter of fact, Elkins mayor, Robbie Skinner, said, no, no, you're, you've been way too conservative, Mayor, you're going to do a lot better than that. So then when we got that first check, I'm like, oh no, I want to... So let me tell you what I did, I even went back to the departments in my first department head meeting, and I said, okay, hold off, we've got things in the budget, hold off, we've got to make sure one plus one equals two. Well, what I'll tell you is, if you take that 900,000 times two, that's 1.8, we budgeted 1.675, um, and then also, I will tell you that historically, your biggest quarter is going to be the next quarter we get, because it's going to include the month of December. So, now let me tell you what else I think is exciting about that, I, I am, I am just absolute about this, what I want to do is I want to get this first year in, I want to get the second year in, and then with this body, this elected body, I want to start eliminating more VNO, I want to start eliminating more VNO. I don't want to take that additional revenue and spend more money, that's not what we should do. I think with that revenue flow, there's things we can do, I think what we've got to do is do what we said we were going to do, and we were going to eliminate VNO, because that makes us attractive, that we do not have that component when people look to come and do business with us, you know, that's a, that's a business tax, that's a, that's a tax that costs you to do business in our city, and then, and then what, what's the sales tax do? Yes, it hits our, it, it, it hits our local consumers, it hits our residents, but guess what? The bulk of our economics is tourism, and so when those people visit here, when they stay in our hotels, when they stay in our cabins, when they buy at our Walmart, when they eat at our restaurants, they're helping us foot the bill to grow our economy and be prosperous. So, and, and you know, in these other states where you go where they don't have, matter of fact, you know, a- as part of this forum that we were in yesterday, um, we sat in, and Gary and I sat through a, a session where all the current governor candidates came through, and told us what they're, you know, what they're going to do for the state, and as a part of that, one of the things that I think is key, I would love to see this state eliminate the state sales tax. Yeah, the personal sales tax, um, because then that again puts us in competition, and what do you do, now, you just can't eliminate it, you got to pick up another tax, but what happens is, you know, that tourism rail, it helps pay and foot the bill for, you know, our, our infrastructure, um, and I, I personally think that's the way to do, is let those that come and visit your state and wear that infrastructure out, help them, let them help pay for us, um, to sustain it and grow. So, um, anyway, positive news with the sales tax, and of course, I look forward to see what that last, what that last quarter's going to be. The other thing I want to tell you, council, please mark this down, I need to know by close of business tomorrow, and so if we don't, if DeeDee doesn't hear from you by close of business tomorrow, it's going to be assumed you will not attend. Um, had a leadership meeting with the fire department, I do it every quarter, it was a couple Tuesdays ago, normally I, we, I would have got this information, we got so far in the weeds on other stuff, uh, we missed this, but anyway, their annual fire department banquet is, uh, this, this, this Saturday, um, and it was just by fluke that something happened, and I called and I said, oh my gosh, we forgot to tell you, Mayor. But anyway, you all are invited, you and your spouses are invited to the banquet, it's this Friday night, starts at 5:00 PM at New Beginnings, many of you have been there before, if you want to attend for their cater, I need to know, um, by close of business tomorrow if you're going to be able to attend, and all I want you to do is call, Steve, you were there last?
Five or 5:30.
It's five, 5 o'clock.
Saturday.
At New Beginnings Saturday.
Saturday.
Yeah, so if you can come, please call and tell DeeDee if I close of business tomorrow.
Saturday.
Yeah, it's this Saturday.
Seventeen. Seventeen, okay.
Okay, anybody have any questions about mine or Gary's reports? If not, I have two quick things I need to notify you in, in executive session, uh, I would ask for a motion to enter into executive session, let me read it off the agenda, because we need to make sure that we are lawful, where's my agenda? So, um, we're moving, I, I ask for a motion, move into executive session under authority of the West Virginia Code 6984, and, uh, this is for purposes of, uh, legal matters. Actually, legal matters and property purchase. Okay, so we got a first, second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries, good to see you tonight, Matt, and Matt, there won't be anything out of executive session, it's just informational, okay? Thank you, have a good evening.